Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on March 9th, 2023, and I would like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Belbruck Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of tonight's meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time, as indicated on the agenda. Mr. Lyman, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Will you please stand if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on our agenda is the Treasurer's Report.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February 9th meeting?
No. So moved. Second.
Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Dorn. Any discussion, corrections, additions to the minutes? Can you please call the roll on adoption of the minutes for February 9th, 2023?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Present.
And Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
I was not here. Across the ocean.
Can I get a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending February 28th?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and Mr. Carpenter?
Just a few things I wanted to point out. If you look at the blue section in your agenda, the front of the first page, the blue section, and by the way, I always mention this, the financial reports are on the website, district website. You can see the real estate taxes at the end of February made up 82% of what we had predicted that they would at that point. That's a timing issue. The rest of the amount came in the first week in March, but the reports are as of last day of February. With 67% of the fiscal year elapsed, we're pretty much where we want to be with our salaries and benefits, and most of the expenses there are either at 67% of the budget or below. And then some of the revenues are actually over what we estimated for revenue, so finances are solid this year at this point. I also wanted to point out that on the front of the second page, state foundation revenue and state and federal assistance for the general fund, 14% and 6% of our budget, that's about 20%, and therefore, we're looking at, at the end of February, only 20% of our budget is from state and federal sources, 80% is from local sources. But again, that's a little, a little off because we did receive our tax, property real estate tax settlement the first week in March. That's not reflected here, so that would make it even more of a local receipt dilemma, or whatever you want to call it. Our salaries and wages total 77%, that's really good for school district, and the rest of the information is in with your packet unless you have any questions. That's all I have.
Can you talk, why did the, we used to be at like 23% if I'm correct?
Right. It's, well, the two parts of that are if the state or federal amount goes down, or if the local goes up, and it depends on what point of the year, since we get our real estate tax money twice a year, and that's a very big chunk of our budget. We just got most of that in, and so the local percent goes up, which makes the state percent go down. It's going to shake out at the end of the year to be like 24, 25% or something like that.
We will probably never pass up an opportunity to comment on the unfairness of how the state funds its local public school districts to where we get somewhere between 22 and 24% from state and federal. That is not very much, and the rest of it has to be made up by local funds, so.
And it seems like our district is unusually, unreportedly punished sometimes when our neighboring districts are getting millions in aid and we get 10,000s in aid, so.
So much, so much of that is based upon the property values of the district or the average income of the residents, or something like that, that knocks us out compared to others.
Well, again, the problem with that is, is not everybody is, you know, there, right? So it's those folks that are not average, that are retired, that are disabled, they live after rent, so yeah, this is, singing the same song we've talked about for some time, but, you know, if you wind back to the clock in the 80s, if I'm not mistaken, somebody had done some research, and the district here received on the order of 60, 65% of their funding from the state. And now, it's, it was, when I came on the board, it was 27%. Now I'm hearing, after it all settles out, 25 or 24%. And I think later, because I believe you're going to talk a bit later about some pending legislation, or considered legislation at state level, you know, which could have a serious impact on our local funding, so I won't steal your thunder on that, but it's just the same old, same old here. So I've said it before, and I'll continue to say, we are late to start to look for alternatives to our property tax-based funding. I'm not sure what the answer is. Printing money would be a pretty good idea, but I don't think we'd all be able to be on board for very long if we started doing that. So, but seriously, folks, we need to get that as part of our discussion as to what we're going to do, because at some point, it's reality, because of the structure of the state of Ohio, recurring levels are an absolute necessity. And we're hopefully many years out from doing that, but the effects of inflation, the effects of this potential House Bill I could change that. So anyhow, let's, let's start talking about that in upcoming meetings, and what we can start with our community, with discussions as to what they see as a solution versus what our current and longstanding paradigm has been for how we fund our schools.
Other questions for Mr. Lyman? Will you please call the roll on approval of the Treasurer's Report?
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
I get a motion to approve advances from general fund to the funds listed in the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn?
Just to emphasize that advances alone, so it's just a bookkeeping thing to finish the, end of the month in the black, and then we will request reimbursement, and the federal government will reimburse that money to us, so it's just a bookkeeping item.
Mr. Lyman, please call the roll requesting approval of advances.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
I get a motion to approve an amendment to permanent appropriations for fiscal year 23 of $85,145.21 to reflect changes in federal grant allocations.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson?
The major difference here was our Title I fund had a large carryover from last year that we weren't expecting, and that's why we had to amend these, so.
Questions or comments? Mr. Lyman, will you please call the roll on approval of an amendment to the permanent appropriations?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
And then the last one of mine, I request approval of the tax rates as set by the Green County Budget Commission, and they're included with the agenda. Let's just go with that.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Dorn?
Did want to note that when we passed the levy in May of 2021, it was 4.9 mils, emergency levy, and it's now 4.66, so that's a good, little, nice little reduction, because we get the exact same amount of money every year from that, and they adjust the millage against our property values to yield the amount that we have to get. So it's a nice little, not a large decrease in taxes, but small.
What happens if we don't approve that?
There are a number of resolutions that I have that question about. What if you don't approve the Treasurer's Report?
Okay. Will you please call the roll on the question of approval of the tax rates that are set by the Green County Budget Commission?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Up next on the agenda, an opportunity for board members to share any correspondence that they think would be good for tonight's meeting.
I got a little good note from the building leadership team from Stevie Bell about all-day, everyday kindergarten, which I think is a great plan for us to implement at some point in time, but certainly to keep that discussion going, I would be anxious for us to still continue on.
Yeah, Mr., that same email included stuff about interventions for kindergarteners, which I think would be a good interim in our process to getting to that point.
You get that email focused on number seven, the public input on the use of federal funds. I thought it can be for other conversations too, but that's where, as we were seeking input, they were providing input for the public input on using federal funds.
Not hearing anything else to be shared at this time. Let's move on to item number five, some of our favorite things to do, that's some good news recognition. We have several student athletes to honor tonight. Can I ask Mia Nazar-Lunas to come up, please? Mia is our state qualifier in diving. Congratulations. Teagan is our state qualifier in the 50 and the 100 freestyle. And Peter Guthrie. Peter is our state qualifier in the 100 breaststroke. Congratulations.
Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Hill, can we get a picture of those three together over there somewhere or so that we can, with their certificates, so we can post that? That'd be great.
Let's give one more round of applause to those student athletes. And we're going to move into item number six, which is reports to the board. Okay, members of the school board, Dr. Cozad, Mr. Lyman, it is with great pride and pleasure that I announce to you that Belbruck Middle School was recognized by the Ohio Department of Education as an Ohio Schools to Watch.
All right. So we are very excited that they will officially present us in the fall in 2024. This is the middle school's third redesignation, and we were actually only one of two schools in the state to earn redesignation this year.
A little explanation about the process that we went through. The application process started way back in the fall. It included a staff survey, which we focused on our academic program, items such as the courses that we are able to offer, instructional strategies that they, that we use here, collaboration. We also addressed how we address the social and emotional needs of children, as well as our intervention programs. On February the 1st, a five-member team from the Ohio Schools to Watch came in to evaluate us. They went into just about every one of our classrooms to observe instruction and how that's taking place. They also had conducted interviews with members of our student body, had a parent group, our teachers and our support staff. Mrs. Sigmund served as the Board of Education Officer, as well as Mrs. Hill and myself.
So one of the things they focus on there are five categories, so they presented in all five categories our areas of reinforcement or things that they think we are doing really well. So the first category was academic excellence and achievement, so one of the things they highlighted was that the middle school earned fives on all categories of the Ohio report card. They complimented our diverse amount of electives that we offer students, six, seven, and eight, and especially highlighted our STEM offerings and our partnership with the Green County Career Center. They also highlighted the variety of instructional strategies that they saw with our teachers, our work toward moving toward everyone having common assessments, as well as our co-teaching with our regular ed teachers and our intervention specialists. That was something we've been working on. The middle school, as well as BCI, received training this summer with our partnership with Wright State about co-teaching and co-teaching strategies, as well as our intervention programs, including Ketchup Cafe, our intervention room, and then our peer tutoring program. The second one that they focused on was our developmental responsiveness, so they loved Eagle. That was kind of one of the things that they admired the most. Three of the five members were actually teachers, and they actually asked to come back and really kind of dive into that, our Eagle program and the things that we offer. They loved our STOP form, which is our students and teachers observing progress we do with students once every two weeks. We check in on both the academic and social emotional needs of our students, as well as our opportunities for student advocacy, student leadership and character building. They definitely highlighted the work done by our Hope Squad, our Student Council, National Junior Honors Society, and they loved our Eagle Outreach class, which is our class that focuses on service in the community, as well as our peer tutoring program.
In addition to that, they talked with us about our social equity, mastering learning, our mystery learning program, the opportunity that students have to retake tests, the fact that, that we feel that it's, learning is never over, it's just a spot where you are in time. We were recognized for our Be the Best program, which I personally would like to thank our PTO, who basically funds all of that for us, gets the gift cards, the candy, the prizes that go out to the kids, and we take care of distributing them each Friday during lunch, so the kids are called up onto the stage, get recognized by their peers for the good things that they've done. They recognize us for our BLT leadership, our partnerships in our community, our Eagle Outreach program, which if you haven't had an opportunity to see, that's a group that they take on service projects throughout our community, and they have an open house once a, once a quarter, I'm sorry, once a trimester, and recognize our STEAM night, which we just conducted here a few weeks ago. Like the fact that we are continuing to foster and bring in new educators, new educators into the profession with our partnerships with Cedarville and Wright State, being OMLA membership, and actually a member of OMLA and Mrs. Hill. They felt we demonstrated evidence of continuing progress, they saw some examples of cross-curricular writing, and the SEL emphasis that took place during Eagle and STOP form that Mrs. Hill already touched on.
And just to add to the OMLA membership, our building is a member, and then we also have individual members, and actually Emily Klein, one of our science teachers and one of our Eagle Outreach teachers, and I have actually presented at the conference the last two years on Eagle Outreach, and then again on, this year we just presented on our peer tutoring program.
What's OMLA? I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's the Ohio Middle Level Association. Yeah, so it's, and then each school is part of a region, and I actually became an affiliate of our region, so we lead certain things at the conference, and then we actually are going to be doing our second year of partnering with Wright State to do a student leadership conference there in March.
Okay.
Yeah, or next, next month in April. Great. Of course, they did have a few areas that they recommended, we were fine as well, so they recommended and would like to see an increase in our interdisciplinary and cross-curricular projects. For example, they talked about, you know, could the novel in ELA be tied to a project and theme in social studies? They also encouraged us to continue common planning time for co-teaching, so that's something we're always taking into consideration as we look at our schedule. Increasing our PBIS programming, we have our Be the Best program, but they would like to see more signage, things like that, making clearer connections of how you earn the Be the Best rewards with PBIS, and that's, that work is actually starting, myself and two other teachers are in the midst of being fully PBIS trained, as well as continuing to work on partnerships with BCI and Stevie Bell, where their, you know, PBIS program is outstanding, so really kind of seeing what we can take that and kind of work it into the middle school, especially as part of the strategic plan building that, building-to-building transition, really kind of making sure our sixth graders see some evidence of what they've grown very accustomed to and what has worked so well at Stevie Bell and BCI. And then just continuing our Focus 3 growth and taking the next step, which is one of our strategic plan pieces. We now have our staff fully trained district-wide, so the next step is going to be that student training.
So out of a possible 26 points, our Belbruck Middle School received a 24.8, so they were very impressed with us. Out of this also, I would like to mention, we did have them contact us, and they have come back, met with some of our teachers, not only about our Eagle program, but also it's a great networking opportunity for our teachers as well to go and learn and share with other people. So it's, it's been a very rewarding experience for us.
And then myself and hopefully a handful of teachers, they invited us to be trained to be site, people that would visit sites, so we'll do that training in June, which we're really excited about, to be able to go to other middle schools, learn about things that they have, and hopefully, you know, bring extra and awesome programming back to the middle school.
Any questions?
Yeah, perhaps I missed it. What's the, the body that awards this?
It is part of the Ohio Department of Education.
Okay, so it's not like US News and World Report or something like that?
Nope.
Okay. So just a comment, this doesn't happen by accident, right? So you all ought to be darn proud, and as rightly as you walk out the door here in two or three months, I think you should feel the lead with this darn good satisfaction of what you've done here, so.
Well, thank you very much, but I mean, to be honest, it's, it's always a team effort.
Exactly. We understand that, but, but if you were all train wrecks, I don't think that this would happen. Right? So you're the nearest person I can figuratively reach out and hug here, so thank you. And again, in your retirement, good luck in whatever you're going to do, and thank you for your service. So I guess in May for done then, or is it June?
June 30th.
He said May.
It's the May, yeah. It's very important, this performance, so. Awesome.
Congratulations.
We're an incredible accomplishment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sad one additional comment, just to echo what everybody else is saying, you know, we know that the good things are happening at the middle school, but it's always good that outside folks and groups recognize that also and validate kind of things that we think we're doing well in, and so kudos to both of you and to the other staff. All right, ready for moving on to the next presentation, staffing update, and strategic plan, so these are kind of together here. Yep. So it's about that, it's that time of the year where, you know, we've been working on, trying to get ready for next year for, for months already, but time of the year that we're really getting the thick of looking at for staffing for next year. Obviously, we've already done that with middle school principalship at the teacher level. There we go. So last year, if you remember, similar presentation of trying to get down to lower class sizes, what kind of those class sizes that we were kind of projecting or looking towards. Again, anytime you go to the class size, it's somewhere to get around that, that particular class size, it's never, you know, for sure we're getting down to that exact class size. But in order to make class sizes much more manageable, we added 10 teachers last year, and that, those 10 teachers, I'm sorry, for this year, we added 10 teachers this school year 22, 23, and we're keeping those obviously through next year in the future, but the funding for that for this year and next year is through our ESTER fund. That's one of the ways that we have utilized our ESTER fund, is trying to lower class sizes academically and whole child-wise, trying to help all of our students. So if you see on the left-hand side up there, those are numbers for last year, so actual enrollment numbers as of a month or so ago of actual enrollment, FY '23, those are the projected averages that we had when I was beginning this presentation last year, well, we added those additional staff, K to 5, and then there's actual class sizes that we had. So actually, for kindergarten, we were a little lower than what we had, than we projected for kindergarten, first grade right around there, second grade even lower than what was projected, just because, again, there are projections, you can't always get the exact numbers there. So that, that's kind of a history from this year, FY '23 fiscal year '23, school year '22, '23. And so then the next slide up here is now the right-hand side are kind of projections looking towards next year, FY '24, the school year '23, '24. So if you're looking at the, the projected enrollments there, obviously kindergarten enrollment, or so far, our signups are really strong, but that 173 is really just an average of the last five years, so we never know really what kindergarten numbers are going to be, but that's how we, how it came up with 173. And the first grade, you don't really know about that either, because right now we have about 164 kids in kindergarten. We always get some additional kids from other places that went to kindergarten somewhere else, maybe for daycare purposes or other things, and then they join us in first grade. So we always get a jump from kindergarten to first grade numbers, again, not really know what that is, but looking at the past few years, about 185 is, is the projected there. So the shoot-for averages are those averages that, you know, we're projecting to try to get near or close to, somewhere around there, and so, again, you can never get to those exact pieces. And then the average, class average projections, the, as you see there, that kindergarten's is projected right now with 21.6. Again, that's based on that 173 number that we don't know if that's accurate or not, just because we're projecting to that. And then the first grade average is 20.6. I know that's on our, it's 20.6. And so though, as you look at those other class averages, projecting pretty close or below in most of those grades of where the shoot-for average is, again, you just never know where enrollment is, but that's our best guess at this point in time. So if that's our best guess, you see the staffing there in the yellow there, so that's our staffing projections. If you remember from, not last year, not this year, but the past years, we pretty much have had for K to 5, or first grade to 5, eight teachers in a grade level. That's kind of where we've been in the past, and last year, and I'm sorry, this year and next year, we're shooting for, you know, nine in most of those grades. If you see the eight in there in third grade, we have a very small, not very small, but smaller than other grade levels, this year's second graders, those are kind of the, if you think back to the COVID piece, so that's when COVID was hitting hard, and people kept their kids out of kindergarten that year, so that, that's the, that's the grade level there. So that grade level is a little smaller than other grade levels, so projecting only eight teachers in that, and even with the eight, we're still below the projected 24 average, even with those eight teachers. So if you put all this together, and again, this kindergarten, at this point in time, we're staying at seven. Again, we have to continue to monitor kindergarten numbers and see where we're at with that. And so right now, that is, this year's numbers are five all day, every day. And so right now, that is, this year's numbers are five all day, every day, kindergarten teachers and two purple and gold every other day. Again, keeping an eye on those numbers and we'll see where we end up with that.
Let me try to understand this.
Yep.
So you have the projected enrollment of 173 with the staff of seven?
Yep.
Should you divide 173 by seven, that should give you your average projection, is that correct?
Every other day.
Yeah, it's actually nine sections.
Okay.
Because two of those teachers are teaching purple and gold.
Okay, got it.
So you, it's double, it's actually out of nine.
Okay. Just trying to do the math there to make sense.
That's pretty good math in public.
Yeah.
But yeah. And so if you, if you put all those things together, it's actually one less teacher compared to this year going into next year, if these numbers stay, stay the same, or that's what we're projecting. So actually, as a third grade teacher is shifting to a fourth grade teaching spot where a teacher's retiring, and so that actually works well with, with that third to fourth, and we actually have a first grade teacher that's moving to second grade. So that's where it was 10, last year, 10 teachers, or this year, I'm sorry, 10 teachers in first grade, next year it's going to be nine. Again, that's since kids, since parents let, or held their kids back, there's going to be a bump there in the next grade level, so that's why that number is a little bigger.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So where do the shoot for averages come from, or how are they determined?
They were the same as from, as this year as we presented last year, so it's the same, same shoot for averages.
Just trying to keep it status quo.
Yeah, trying to keep it status quo, is what we shot for this year, this school year. So going forward, next school year, trying to keep the shoot for average is about the same.
Gotcha.
So again, as you can see, grade levels, our kindergarten shoot for is a little smaller, first grade gets a little bigger, second and third a little bigger, and then about 25 or so in grades, what, four up to 12. And again, that varies from class to class, but those are the same shoot for averages that we had for this school year. We got pretty close or even below.
I was going to say, that's great that we're meeting or even exceeding what, what the intent, the intent is, so that's great.
Again, anytime you, again, we're lucky in a district that we have grade level buildings, so we can, anytime it changes, we can, we can put that change over eight or nine teachers, whereas other districts, if they have community buildings or neighborhood schools, you've got one area, one area that's really booming, another one is lower, there's class sizes can be much smaller in one school compared to another. We can really even out our class sizes much better by our, by our configuration. Any other, and at the bottom there, principals and counselors, that's our current principals and counselor numbers, and then also those are the numbers that we're projecting for next year. Again, with Stephen Bell, the kindergarten, the first grade, we're never quite sure, but that's what the projections are at this point. So any other questions about this part? Okay, all right. So, so moving on to other staffing pieces for next school year. So some of my thoughts and ideas here, and also of meeting with, meeting with staff, counselors, administrators, district-level cabinet, I've been looking at these things for months. That first piece there, where our current open positions, certified open positions are two intervention specialists at the middle school, and one Title I reading at Stephen Bell, those are all due to retirements. And so right now, as from the previous page, reduced one teaching position at BCI due to that is fluctuations in enrollment. Again, we've still achieved the targeted or shoot for average class sizes. That's about $75,000, it's probably on the conservative end. And so as we talk with, with counselors, administrators, trying to see what, what possible changes or ideas for next year, we've, we've come to a couple conclusions here. So one of them is working with our Green County Educational Service Center, increasing our, our school-based mental health services by, by two days. Right now, we have four days for the district. We have one person coming in four days, splitting her time between all the building to help our, say, neediest, I will probably say tier three, the highest tier of our students. And so projecting to increase that by two days, obviously, there'd be an additional person that would either do the two days or split those three in three, that service from the ESC. But that does, that is a benefit of working with the ESC. We can kind of get partial, partial people, and then they, they kind of work those out with other school districts and try to get as full-time as possible. And then also of adding an additional day for a preschool supervisor. Currently, she is working about two or three days in our district, and then the rest of the week at a couple other preschools, again, with the ESC, that flexibility piece. So we are wanting to, to bring her in for an additional day a week. That would allow our school psychologist who splits time between the preschool and BCI to free her up to have more time at BCI. And so she's been doing a lot of kind of administrative work and those kind of things, and/or attending IEP meetings. And so as much as possible, we would like the preschool supervisor to take over as many of those things. Again, there's some things that the psych, psychologist has to do, so she obviously will continue that, but if there's things like attending IEP meetings or other things that she was doing, we're going to try to shift that over to the preschool supervisor. And so again, that would provide more support, whether it's behavioral or other type of support, to Belle Creek Intermediate. And so she would spend a vast, vast majority of her time there. And so again, after talking with administrators, counselors, and so forth, those are two of the, the areas that we would focus on. Again, with the mental health, we're not quite sure what schools would, would give the additional days. We're going to see what those needs are and then split that time up appropriately. The other piece here is, again, of trying to, to gather some support for the challenges and the increased load at, at Belle Creek Intermediate. I am advocating for and, and supporting an additional administrator at Belle Creek Intermediate. And there's been an increase in our student population there. If you look at the previous page, our BCI numbers are very similar to our middle school number. Our middle school has two counselors and two administrators. Belle Creek has one counselor and one administrator. The needs of that population has increased. Again, I, kids are growing up a little bit quicker than they have in the past, and some of those things are, are increasing the intensity of, of the needs of, of Belle Creek Intermediate. I mentioned the number of principals and counselors on the previous side, believe previous slide, we also research schools that are similar to us. And sometimes it can be challenging to kind of compare apples and apples at the elementary level, because a lot of time at the elementary level, people are, or districts are divided up by facility-wise, that whatever happens to be, I know, facility-wise, I know a district that's similar size to us, they have five elementary schools. And so obviously, they have five principals, but they only have maybe 200 or 250 kids in those, those schools. So they're really much smaller, however, just because of their configuration. But we did look around to other schools that are similar to us, not necessarily near us, but similar to us. Sometimes we want to look at schools that are right next to us, but sometimes those schools aren't similar to us. And so as we did that, we have about one administrator per 297 students, the lowest in that had about 129 per admin or counselor, and the highest was at 315. And so we were on the much higher end of that, and trying to bring that number down and really trying to, to provide some extra support to Belle Creek Intermediate to help out with that, with the staff and the students, and really trying to, to, like I said, provide some additional support. I know that is an additional add, and that is not something that I take lightly, that all of you take lightly, and I wouldn't, and I've been thinking about this for quite a long time, and we've had conversations in administrative meetings for a fair amount of time of, of trying to provide some extra support. And I really think it's, it's critical that we get some additional support at, at Belle Creek Intermediate. And then so, again, at the possible, the probable cost, the projected cost of both ESC and the extra administrator at BCI, total cost, projected, proposed, you know, app or that, about $185,000 per year. Obviously, we would subtract any type of staff reductions, and again, staff reductions, I get that it could be a staff reduction this year, we might have to add back next year, so that's not always a going-forward kind of reduction. But again, I, I wouldn't be advocating for it, I wouldn't be talking about it here if, if I really didn't see that there was a, a need at Belle Creek Intermediate for some additional administrative support there.
Something that's not particularly clear to me.
Sure.
It's really not specifically to BCI and the district administrator, because I, I understand the, you know, the case there that you're making.
Yep.
One I'm a little bit uncertain about, I seem to recall a few months, a few months ago, that we did take a look at how a number of counselors with respect to mental health we have in our school system. And as I recall, and maybe I remember incorrectly, at the time, the conclusion was we were doing better than most schools in that area. And so what confuses me a bit is here, under, at additional administrator at BCI, the third bullet down, it talks about, you know, researching out the number of admins and counselors, it's like they're linked together there, and we're talking about one admin slash counselor per 297 students. Lowest is 129, the highest is 315. So it seems to me like there's a, there's a mixing of, and again, I'm not talking, I really don't want to talk about BCI here. My point is really this, with respect to mental health, counselors and other mental health services, how do we stack relative to other districts? Because in that bullet, I just mentioned, it's lumping an administrator and a counselor together in the same sentence, so.
Right. Again, why it's lumped together at the elementary level is because, like I said, there's different configurations at different elementary buildings, and it was trying to just determine what kind of administrator or counselor help is at those buildings. For example, the district I mentioned earlier about the five elementary, so they have five principals, they have one counselor. So they have six adults, administrative slash counselors that are dealing with those five schools. Other schools maybe are split up, you know, are K to six buildings, so maybe there's a couple administrators at one, or one administrator at each building, and then there's a counselor that splits between each building. So it just is really difficult at the elementary level to really get a clear counselor and admin separated. I mean, I do have those, those numbers, but, but to try to get some type of, because those are the two people or three people, those are the adults kind of in the office from the, counselor's not an administrator, but they're working with kids, they're working through problems, they're, they're helping, for lack of a better term, at the elementary level, they're almost an assistant, not assistant principal, but they're assisting the principal in some of the things that are going on. As for the, the comment about the number of mental health and counselors, I, I don't recall, I don't recall me saying that we were at a high level compared to other districts, because actually, other districts have spent some ESTR money or other things to, to increase some of those services. So we really, until the, the proposed increase of two days here and trying to provide some more support to BCI via the adding the preschool supervisor and pushing over the psych to provide some more help, we really haven't added any mental health slash counselor help necessarily in the district over the past few years.
Yeah, I, I don't have an opinion, or I don't, I don't have any knowledge or numbers on that. I'm just asking a question, because I, I'm, I'm near certain that we discussed this, what is our mental health staffing in the school district? And I recall months ago that there was a statement that we are doing better than most. Now, when you go back to this school situation you just mentioned, five elementary schools, 250 kids each, that's 1,250 if I'm doing math in public correctly, and there's one counselor. So that's one counselor to 1,250, but the principal ratio is a lot better.
Right.
It's 1 to 250, and I, and I would argue that a principal is not a mental health provider, you know? So I, I'm just a little bit confused, or it's great to me when we start mixing administrators and counselors in the same sentence, you know?
Sorry, I don't know. I think it gets a little squishy, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, when you're talking about administrators, we're talking about principals, psychologists get lumped.
No, just the principals or assistant principals.
Assistant principals are principals.
So there's, there's, like, we're talking about a kid who is struggling behaviorally, they might meet with a principal, they might meet with a, the school psych, they might meet with a counselor, they might meet with a combination of those individuals. And those are the kids we're talking about, right? Like, kids who are struggling generally behaviorally, mental health-wise, which is probably going to be serviced by some combination of those three. So yeah, I think sometimes, and it overlaps between like, mental health and special ed too, because psychs fill a special ed role in the IEP realm, as well as filling that role and, and helping this student with a mental health concern too. So it is super complex, like, I get, and I get why it's confusing when we're talking about one versus another. But I think in general, we're just talking about the number of adults in the building who aren't dedicated teaching staff, like, teaching a class at that moment and can devote one-on-one time to a student who's struggling behaviorally.
Yeah, because the counselor, again, if we use some educational talk here, of different tiers, so the tier one is just a regular classroom, everybody kind of gets it. Tier two is that student needs a little extra help, and tier three is that student needs a lot more extra help. We use that in the counseling realm. Tier one would be, you know, just classroom, just at the classroom level, or maybe there's classroom lessons from the counselor going in, you know, those kind of things. But then tier three would be more the guidance counselor, there's some kids having a little trouble, kids have a little stress, those kind of thing. And then there's the tier three, which is where the mental health counselor would then come in, and/or possibly, if it's behavior-wise, possibly the psychologist doing some type of behavioral plan and, and behavior support to our teachers. So the mental health actually is different than the guidance counselor parts. The mental health is one step above just the general guidance counselor part. And so when we say mental health, that we increased, a couple years ago, we had three days in the district, we went up one day, and that's probably three years ago, we went up one day to four, and four, for, four days for all of our schools. So that's our school-based mental health, so that is our neediest kids, mental health-wise, and trying to provide them extra support, and that's why there's two, proposed two additional days for that, so.
When you say, please, I guess, this will go out here, define what you mean by day. One person available to the entire district, or is that what it means?
Correct. So one, one full-time equivalent person. So when you say six days, obviously, one person can't work six days in a five-day work week, it's going to be two people that's going to fill that spot. So we have six days to, to then spread among all of our schools, rather than just four days of one person to spread among all of our schools. And I would say that, that, that is not on the higher end of the number of days for, for school districts.
How many people provide mental specific, not just guidance counselors, but provide specific mental health services to our district?
Like this school-based, this is what we call, maybe we call it school-based mental health. I don't, I don't know that number, but I would say around here, probably almost every school district.
No, I mean, our, our particular school. I mean, how many people do we have? Just one person for days, that's it?
Correct.
That provides any type of?
Mental health support, yes.
I thought we had some school psychologists though that were full-time.
Correct. They don't, that's not necessarily their role. Their role is mostly testing, ETRs, IEPs, that kind of testing. And so a vast, vast majority of their job is that. So when we say psychologists, we don't, probably when you're thinking psychologists out in the other, you know, the, I would say the world world, but outside of school world, psychologists, psychiatrists, counselors, those are all kind of lumped in together. I'm having some issues, I'm going to go talk to my psychologist or psychiatrist or counselor. Our psychologists don't really do that in this district. Other districts, they may do that, but it just depends on what school district. They have the, they have the credentials to do that, but we utilize them more in the special ed testing role and not as much as in the help with behaviors or some extra special help with coaching teachers and so forth.
I assume guidance counselors though provide at least some lower level of help. If some kid goes in and goes, I'm depressed, the guidance counselor will talk to them, correct?
Correct.
And then maybe help do a referral to that visiting mental health provider.
Yeah, again, they, they would assess and see if this, does this kid need some more intense help? And so that's when they would then reach out to that, that mental health, school-based mental health counselor. mental health counselor that serviced that particular person and get that ball rolling.
Again, I'm asking these questions so I can understand.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't clear to me at all.
Yeah, but I think maybe the psychologist thing, you know, maybe got a little confusing too, because we really don't use a psychologist for necessarily mental health counseling kind of purposes.
And I think it's important for us, like, for me especially, like, as a board, we need to make sure that, yes, mental health for students is very important, but mental health for our staff and administrators is also equally important so that they can do their job appropriately. So, I mean, I thank you for all this that you put together.
For me, when it comes down to just dollars, and I know that this isn't, this isn't a board vote thing, this is just getting a feel for where we stand on this. I don't oppose any of this. Some of it gives me pause in, in the fact, particularly with the additional administrator, because that's a recurring expense. And once it's there, it's hard to take away, it will probably never go away. The thing that gives me additional pause is probably the things that we're going to talk about later with things that are going on in our legislature right now. And we don't fully understand the impact that that could have on our district, which could, I think, be really significant.
And if I may, it could affect us next year.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, very, near term. So I think, like, out of Doran's opinion, I trust your judgment. You think this is necessary, I support that, Dr. Coogad. But I would say if, by virtue of, because I think we're on a really good financial path right now, but if by virtue of things happen that are out of our control that put us in a very different financial position, this, the additional mental health days concern me less because ESC contracts can be changed kind of that well, right? But my personal preference would be, if things get bad, we have a significantly different financial perspective in the near term. We have to, if we're back in the seat where we are making cuts like this or a position like it happened, cuts before all those class sizes that we just reduced. Like, this is, that maybe that sounds crass or whatever, but that's where my priorities lie. If this is necessary, I'm supported, but if we have to go back to a bad place with that, that would be where I would look to first.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, and that's, that's, I agree that those, that House Bill one, I think we'll get to it later, but it's, there's a lot of unknowns still with it, you know? Maybe somewhere where legislation is proposed, it doesn't, that's not where it ends up. The other piece is just, you know, as a district, we're really lean in just stretching people and so trying to be responsive to that also. And it's, at some points, to be responsive to those, to those requests or looking at information. And again, like I said, administrators, counselors, the district cabinet, looking at this, not this particular thing, but this issue or problem or concern for months, like October, September, October, November, it's been a long time. We've been trying to dig into this and then kind of try to land somewhere. And there was multiple landing spots all through those months of where we wanted to go and trying to gather more information. And so.
No, I understand. I mean, I understand in your front office that we are super lean, we don't have an assistant superintendent, we have a part-time business manager, we have a combination curriculum director and gifted services director. I mean, we are lean, I recognize that.
But it is always hard to just talk about dollars. Makes you sound cold, makes me feel cold, which is ironic, as hot as this gets sometimes with as many balls are in the air and irons in the fire. So, I mean, first and foremost, absolutely, I mean, as a board, we need to meet the needs that are raised from the administrators to aid the district. So I thank you for this, this is very helpful. I mean, I, I saw some of this only like eight days ago or something, and it's helpful. And if possible, it'd be nice to maybe have us in the conversation a little bit sooner. But first and foremost, we have to meet the need if we can. I feel comfortable doing so. I think you laid it out very well. And especially because, and just correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but kind of as a summary is that with the potential costs and going back comparing to earlier in your brief with the staffing levels, and just so people know, part of the reduction in staffing was like we had a retirement, right? It was things like that.
Yeah, it was retirement.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it is or is very close to revenue neutral. Yes. It's, they're offset.
Well, there's a reduction, no, there's a reduction of one staff member, so it's about 75, right?
So like 110 would be.
A dollar.
But it helps.
It does, it does help.
So I, so kind of, I will completely echo Mrs. Doran, but I just say that my thoughts line up with hers is that, you know, that this is revenue neutral at this time. So I think that that still falls well within the financial goals that we've set out very recently, with just the knowledge of, yeah, things may change in the future. Hopefully not.
Anything else for that part? And so just, okay. All right, so moving on to the next section here, strategic plan. So at the January 28th board meeting, we talked, it was a planning meeting for the board, a board retreat. We retreated all the way down to the large group room here down in the middle school, not offsite, but here. And part of that was looking at strategic plan and for need to go out and look at some strategic plan companies and organizations that provide those services. And so I met with five, five organizations slash companies and tried to get a feel for what services they offered and so forth and support and then the cost. So as you can see on there, a wide range of costs for strategic plan purposes, from $12,000 all the way to 70 grand. So they actually have, all had similar strategies and processes, but the costs were partially impacted by the amount of work they did for us. Obviously, the more work they did for us, the higher cost, but at some of them, they were just more expensive. And so as I continue to think about this, I have a couple of slides of just questions and thoughts. If we want some direction tonight, if not, if we want to continue to think about this. These are just some, I wouldn't say rhetorical questions, but questions of, you know, what's our end goal? Do we want a bunch of new initiatives? A lot of times strategic plans, those are the grand plans that we have, that we want to do, that maybe are adding this, adding that and so forth. And so, you know, that's one piece of our last strategic plan was pretty big, pretty ambitious. And so trying to keep that in mind also. Another thought is building on the good things going on in the district and then trying to continue those internal systems, to trying to continue all those good things that we're doing and getting even better at them and honing in on those things. Setting and working on the goals of the district and/or soliciting input from stakeholders. So a lot of those things go on in strategic plan work and so forth. Moving on to the next slide, you know, maybe we just, I want to say random thoughts here, but just thoughts of a few goals, work on a few goals in the areas, like maybe systemizing our processes in areas such as MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. I know in education, we like those acronyms. Essentially, as I was talking earlier, you know, providing that solid tier one support that's at the classroom level for everybody, and then people that, kids that need extra help, whatever area it is, they get extra help in tier two. And those things they need extra help in, they get more help in tier three. That's kind of the simplistic way of what MTSS is all about, of providing those, those needs in all those particular tiers or levels based on what the kids need, whether it's in academics, whether it's in behavior, and providing the resources for that. Other areas we could focus on would be facilities, communications, positive culture, finances. And those are things that are typically on strategic plans or areas. Again, there could be other areas, these are just maybe the areas in the past. Again, just a few thoughts on there, communications piece, again, that was on our last strategic plan. And I think we're doing a better job of communicating and so forth, you can always do better, but continuing on that with that. Facilities, at some point, we need to look at some facilities, our downtown building, our other sports facilities, and also, you know, this is our newest building right here, and it's 17 years old. So if you, you know, anything that's getting to be at age, it's got to be upkeep to it. Positive culture, we are looking at Focus Three, that was in Ohio schools that want presentation from middle school. We have all of our staff trained this year and moving into the student level next year and seeing what we need to do to that. And with finances, I know maybe some interest in, right, remember comments from earlier in the, in the night of alternative sources of revenue and so forth. So maybe that's an area to look in. Again, just because we don't put those, one of those areas as a goal in this, like, doesn't mean we don't, we can't work on that area either. But either way, just a reminder, and I think this is what's got us last time with our last strategic plan, making sure the number of our goals are manageable. Like I said, we are, we're really lean and making sure that if we're doing this, let's keep it small and let's really focus in on what we're doing. But also keeping, including both financial and human resources need for successful implementation, you know, to making sure that it's set up for success, but not only the, the materials or those kind of resources, but also the human resource, whether it's, whether it's coaching or whether it's extra supports here, whether it's, it's something else. But thinking through those things and making sure that, because things don't always go as planned, so what's the plan for when those things don't go as planned? And just thinking out those things more fully so that whatever want, whatever things that we are doing, we're higher, higher likely to succeed because we have those, those things thought out before, you know, so that we know the cost going in also, whatever it is. And so, you know, using, should we use an external group or an internal support? Again, if we are using external group, and probably the positives of that is there probably can be more participation, other people are doing a lot of the work, and so there maybe can be more pieces to it. Whereas if we do it internally, we probably need to keep it much smaller, much more manageable. There may be less input from folks just because that adds to the workload of the people doing the work and/or we just need to stretch it out longer, so.
As I recall, we discussed this in depth at our, sorry, January 28th meeting, and I believe the consensus was to use an external, I guess, group to provide that. Unless I'm not remembering it correctly, but I thought we had a general consensus that we would.
I don't remember it that way. I, not because we were against it, but I think, I felt like the consensus was, let's have a very, like, we are a district who is performing well, 13th in the state, like, if we are a failing district, we need a very in-depth, let's, let's find all the areas where we need improvement, set goals about all those areas. If you're a district who is performing well, thanks to all the stakeholders here who are involved, so let's, very high level strategic, like, let's keep the strategic and strategic plan document what our overarching, where our overarching priorities lie, things like academic first, things like, you know, like, keeping top-rate facilities that are well-maintained and, you know, whatever. I'm shooting from the hip here, but a very high level document that shows where our priorities lie to our staff, to our parents, to our community, and then let the tactical happen like it does every day in our buildings. I think the previous, the previous strategic plan was so ambitious, I think that it never even really got done, and by the time it ever got done and like board approved, it would have been time to almost start one over. And I don't want to put our staff through all of that, I think we just need a very high-level strategic.
Yeah, the last strategic plan was very ambitious, very big. The other pieces, there was levy issues in the middle of it, so a lot of things that cost money, they went out the door. COVID hit, we just had to refocus on other things. We were just focusing on what do we need to do to get kids in school, what do we need to do to academically get them ready? And we just kind of.
Fight the fight.
Yeah, yeah, really, the strategic plan of the, I want to say extra stuff, but the extra stuff just kind of took second fiddle. But I do remember that we were talking about external groups, and that's why I thought it was the thought that go out, seek some external groups, see what, see what's out there, get some input, or see what is out there, and then, and then come back with that information. You know, I'm not a, I would prefer smaller, manageable, more focused, but also keeping in mind those financial and human resources needed for successful implementation. So if we're going to do it internally, may take a little longer to get it rolling and so forth just because of the internal staff doing it. And it doesn't mean we can't get a little support from maybe a outside organization at a much smaller level to provide some help.
Yeah, I mean, like, this is one of those areas that, in a perfect world, sure, yeah, let's do this, but I think we really, I would rather have those dollars be for students. If we can do something much smaller, much more manageable for you, much more manageable for the staff, go back to the basics kind of thing, I, that's kind of where I personally would like to.
Andrew, your point's well taken. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? Basically. And because of what you said about keeping it simple too, I mean, ideally, I'd like to look at two pages, three pages, you know, with bullets and, you know, look with a paragraph behind it just to explain what, what are we doing here? You know, what's our purpose? Why do we exist as an organization? Something manageable, but if it's strung out across 150-page document, it's just not digestible, you know?
Can I just, sorry, go ahead, I thought you were gonna, now, can I just go out there, maybe, like, can we as board members take an action to, let's go look at, every district who has a strategic plan has it published on their website. Let's all of us go look and find one or two, not that we love all of this, this need of it, all this stuff that it says, but the general weight of it, volume of it, how much detail is in it, and bring that back, like, roughly at the next beat. Kind of say, hey, we think these, like, something like this is what is appropriate. And I would invite any, you know, yourself or any administrator to do the same thing, like, what, what do you think would be helpful? What do you think is too much? Like, yeah, if there's a big crazy one, print it out, right? Way too much, don't want this, you know? Or this one looks really great, I love you, this one is a model.
Yeah, I could bring some examples too. I mean, I can share, I can, I already have some just because through this research, I already have some that are readily available, but that might be a good starting point. So also then go out and look.
I think Mr. Kendi, you have one.
I have one, I passed along, yeah, but I like that idea, just to kind of give a flavor of what one may look like. Obviously, the biggest needs, the contents need to come from all stakeholders and others, but this kind of, I love focused, I love streamlined, I love manageable, since I think we've kind of been without a strategic plan for some time, and I get it, I mean, raise your hand if you weren't just throwing out strategic plans in 2020 and moving into survival mode and doing what you can. And everybody was, so that's why something, a couple, two, three goals for the next two, three, four years to really have the district sink their teeth into, I think would be a really great thing.
I'm intrigued by the systemizing our processes, we had a discussion about that, and that getting, that provides both opportunity for improvement as well as potential cost savings when you're talking about, you know, standardizing or working through, you know, efficient process, particularly as students and folks transition from one building to the next building and so forth, that the processes are familiar, the resources are familiar and so forth. That, that's an opportunity for benefit as well as cost savings, so that, I'd be interested in knowing what kinds of things could potentially be included in that item.
Yeah.
All right. I'm happy to be there.
I know, and that's, that first one is something that I've heard the staff mention in the district literacy committee. Mrs. Weber has been talking about that MTSS process. And I know I sat in on, at the OSBA conference on one about the. And I know I sat in on, at the OSBA conference on one about the, um, the panorama feature. They have a whole system built in to track all of that. So I wasn't sure, I know we use that sometimes, but I wasn't sure if our level of membership would give us access to something like that.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I know they, I, I have the, the thing at home and I can bring it to you.
Okay.
For me, on the internal to the external resource helping with that, I, I just, I'm not going to be informed enough to know what's a good sense. I'd appreciate your recommendations or you make the call or just let us know some times, like, because yeah, if we can look at whatever, it might be $25,000 here, we might bristle at that at first, but then you're like, well, you know, if we don't go with that, it'll be six staff members at this many man hours and you multiply that by four months and you're past that anyway. So I, I, I don't feel informed enough to have a good opinion on the best way to go for that.
Well, if we can put it on the next board meeting, I will come back with some additional information. Board members want to look through other strategic plans, come back with that for the next, I can try to get my head around maybe a, a structure or framework to, to move as a proposed, you know, just a thought process and then this would mean that's the final thing, but just coming back with some more specific ideas of a structure and framework of moving forward at the next meeting. That's, that would sound okay.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Anything else with that? Okay. All right. Moving on to public.
Okay, item agenda number seven, public input on the use of federal grant funds. Mr. Liming.
The Bellbrook Sugar Creek Local School District receives federal grants through the Ohio Department of Education via the Consolidated Continuous Improvement Plan. Monies received through Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act and Early Childhood Special Education are used to provide special education services to students with identified disabilities, ages three to 21. Title I funds are used for supplemental initiatives and teacher salaries for reading intervention. Title II A funds are used for targeted professional development based upon district needs. Title IV A funds are used for well-rounded education initiatives, health and safety of students, and effective use of technology. COVID relief ESER funds are used to address academic learning loss, the health and safety of students and staff, and to maintain operations. The, these details can be found on the district website under the communications tab. All funds must align with the goals outlined in the district's CCIP or Consolidated Continuous Improvement Plan. Public input regarding these federal funds for the school district is welcome until March 31st, 2023. Comments can be sent to Dr. Doug Cozad Superintendent or Betsy Gann, Director of Curriculum at 3757 Upper Bellbrook Road. You may also email your input to Dr. Cozad or Mrs. Gann and, uh, their email address and other details, and the statement itself can be found on the district website.
Just add a few thoughts to that. So the Title I money, we, we get about $150,000, $160,000 a year from Title I. And again, like, like this statement says, we use that for, essentially for teaching salaries for those reading interventions. Um, Title II A for that professional development, we get about $45,000 a year. Um, and then for IDEA B, uh, we get about $557,000 and we, we use that towards our, our, um, contract with ESC for preschool, for OTPT, and obviously that doesn't pay for all of that. The ESER funds, again, in a couple of years with that, with our, um, return to school continuity plan, I don't know if that's the official title, but how, we're communicating with public how those funds are used, and so that's on our website. And so that, you have to give feedback about every six months on that. So again, the main thrust of those dollars, like we said earlier, reducing class size with teachers, spend a lot of money on that, special needs aides, providing those extra supports for, for, uh, behaviors and so forth. Transportation services, we've had to contract for transportation because of lack of bus drivers, so we've been able to utilize that money. Um, foundations with our phonics program and then also summer school has come out of our ESER fund. So again, we were a little slow spending our ESER money at the beginning because we really wanted to focus on things that were going to have the most impact on our students, and that is lowering class sizes, special needs aides, phonics programs. We think those are the best use of that, that money of trying to get it to the classroom as, as much as possible. That's all I can get. Just wanted to provide some, some numbers with some of those things and dollar figures.
So the district absolutely covets your input. If you have any, feel free to reach out. I know, I think I've seen this on social media, active to Henry, very much. Uh, we, we want your input. Hopefully you've seen increased efforts towards transparency, accessibility, um, over the last year or so, so I'll, I'll put out a plug, kind of similar to this, requesting public input. Next week, March 14th, is our next curriculum review. Uh, it's just kind of a public open house that you can come in and check out the, what will be a proposed science curriculum for grades three through 12. It's a two hour time period. You can come in, check things out, ask any questions that you have. Last minute thoughts. Uh, that is here at the middle school in the large group room, right down the road, and it's right before a PTO meeting. And I believe there's a presentation as part of the PTO meeting. I went last year, um, for the K through two phonics open review that we did. It was, it was really great. It was a great event. Daytime again, I'm sorry. It is five to seven PM on March 14th, uh, and then the PTO meeting is at seven directly follows. Uh, okay, up next is our open communication period. Kevin, would you mind? Can I impose a, a closer, a closer Kevin? We welcome your thoughts and comments at this time. When given the floor, please begin by sharing your name, address, and any group affiliation you may hold that is relevant. You will then have three minutes to share your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, thank you, who tonight happens to be me. Uh, just in case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website in policy number 169 dot 91, is just to ensure that everyone who wishes to speak is treated equally and fairly. And we have one speaker tonight, Dr. Meredith Brenniger.
Welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Meredith Brenniger and I live at 2221 Ivy Crystal. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to, I had prepared remarks, but first of all, I just wanted to congratulate the middle school on reorganization as an Ohio school to watch. And I especially love their, their, um, ability to do retakes and emphasize mastery learning, not only for the social equity that it helps with, because not all students are at the same starting point with family, uh, support, but it's just good practice to focus on learning in grade. So, um, I think that's wonderful. And also I wanted to briefly publicly acknowledge, um, the wonderful job our transportation department administrators did when we had that tornado, uh, warning. I was one of the parents that had a child on a bus when the warning happened and had to get diverted to another school. I thought you handled it wonderfully and the communication was appreciated as somebody who's wondering what's going on. So thank you, thank you. It also helps when your child has a cell phone. So, um, okay, um, the main reason that I'm here is that I wanted to, um, to talk about, I mean, that we, Dr. Cozad just mentioned the use of federal funds for things like student health, safety, and academic performance. My proposal addresses all of these areas, is inexpensive, and could probably be implemented without external funds, and it's later start times for middle and high schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics has advocated for middle and high schools to start no earlier than 8:30 since 2014, except few schools have actually made the switch. But those who have, like Seattle, have seen promising results with improvements in amount of sleep, academic performance, tardiness, and mental health. Now, I can already hear the rebuttal, just make sure your teens go to bed earlier. Well, it's not really that simple, right? When adolescents go through puberty, their biological clocks are shifted later, meaning that even if kids go to bed earlier, they're not typically able to fall asleep. So the answer is shifting their wake times and accordingly school times. I was kind of aghast last year when the middle school's time was shifted from 7:50 to 7:30. This was kind of going in the wrong direction. So, and I'd even be curious to have middle school teachers report on how their students focus, interact, and learn during that very first period of the day. Um, now I recognize that this suggestion presents at least two logistical challenges, busing routes and sports. It will take some planning with transportation and perhaps coordination with neighboring districts for athletics, but I think this can and should be done if there's the political will to do this. And I will add that for a district facing financial hardships and with House Bill One looming, and I know we, I am, I look forward to hearing what you have to say about that. Um, and a board who has reminded us in recent meetings that they are fiscal conservatives, it's hard to imagine a more cost-effective intervention with such far-reaching benefits. I urge you to consider shifting the start time of both the middle school and high schools to 8:30 or later, and if not immediately, if not next year, maybe have a plan for future years. Um, and I'll follow up. I have, uh, an email that I can send everybody that has summarizes both like some academic research and popular press articles on this topic. Um, I also planned to, was gonna plan to address, um, mental health services in a follow-up emails while I did not have time to do that, my three minutes. Um, but I was excited to see that, uh, Dr. Cozad has suggested two more, I guess, the equivalent of two days of mental health counselors. Um, I thank you for this, I think it is needed, and I think you did an excellent job of distinguishing school psychologists, clinical psychologists, counselors. They're, they're similar, but they are distinct roles, and I think, I think you nailed it. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that closes tonight's period for open communication. Up next is the superintendent's report.
All right, we have a new business, certificated, uh, we're going to do a consent agenda for A and B, certified license employment resignation leave of absence, supplemental duty, supplemental duty, people activity other, um, and then volunteers for the supplemental duty, people activity, subteachers, administrative contact, contract for Jenna Hill, and then B, support staff employment, resignation leave of absence, uh, of course, support staff employment, substitute support staff, and a few resignations, uh, for some staff members. So it's a consent agenda with A and B, and also on a hand carry, there's an added to five A, um, a couple more substitute teachers.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Mr. Carpenter and Mrs. Anderson? Discussion or questions? Mr. Liming, will you please call the role on adoption of the consent agenda?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Um, just want to quickly recognize Ms. Hill there, and her and her family have been waiting very patiently through some exhilarating, uh, presentations here. But, uh, Ms. Hill is our new principal here at Bellbrook Middle School. She spent four years here at the middle school as an assistant principal. Um, she has done a fantastic job, was, was definitely by far our best candidate through the whole process and frontrunner, and just knocked it out of the park through our whole interview process. Uh, very much a part of the positive culture that's here at the middle school, um, well-respected, well-rounded instructional leader, um, just doing a nice job. They're, 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 they're second to me. They're, they're saying the same thing. It's great. Um, but she's just a, a top-notch individual also, that adds to the whole piece, so that probably speaks more than even any other stuff of that. She's just a top-notch individual. So congratulations, and would you like to introduce some of your family? Has they been waiting patiently here? Um, done a fantastic job?
Sure.
Yes?
Um, I just want to say thank you so much to Dr. Cozad of Board Education. Um, I'm thrilled to be continuing the great work at Bellbrook Middle School. Um, so proud of all my amazing staff, just full of, um, rock star teachers and support staff who, who just love, love kids and just continually do what's best for kids. So I'm truly blessed and honored that I get to continue that work. Um, and very special that, that my husband Brian and my daughter Elsie and my son JD are here with me, um, as well as my close friends and JD's grandparents, Kelly and Joe Owens, um, my teachers, Eddie Peterman, administrative staff, thank you so much for being here, even I come, and I would be remiss to not recognize just the four wonderful years, um, of learning and mentorship that I've had with Jenna. So, thank you. I'm, I'm privileged and honored and excited.
Glad to have you on board of this new position. Look for great things to continue in the future, so thank you. Congrats again. All right, um, C, legal counsel, recommend approval of the firm Bricker and Eckler LLP as additional board school district legal counsel.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter, Mrs. Dorn?
Bye.
Bye.
I have that same code. This is more specifically with our, uh, to provide some additional support and more specific help with our armed response team. Um, our, the last person, last firm that we had, uh, we had a contract with had some conflicts of interest that they couldn't get out of, so hence why we are moving forward with a different one, just more, just specifically on the armed response team, some more additional help.
Any discussion? Mr. Liming, please call the role.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
All right, D, ESC service agreement for 23, 24 school years, recommend approval of the service agreement with the Green County Educational Service Center for supplemental services during the 23, 24 school year at $2.3 million.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter, Mrs. Dorn?
Again, we contract with the, the educational service centers as we were just talking with earlier, mental health services, but also our preschool, um, is a ESC preschool OTPT speech services, um, so contract with them for a variety of those services.
I know this seems like a big ticket item, and it is, but it also includes all kinds of things that would be more expensive for us as a district to do on our own than if we collaborate with the ESC who, you know, helps divvy up those resources throughout districts in our, in our county and in some places in other counties as well. So although we know it's a big, it's a big number, you know? Overall, it is a savings for us to be able to engage those resources. So, and I think it's, it's great that we continue to utilize this resource as much as we possibly can.
And this is approximately the same cost as.
It's a little bit higher. We are at 2.1, I believe, last year, Mr. Liming, so it's a little bit more than last year, or this is an estimate. We, we make these payments throughout the year and then we true it up at the end, so it might be higher or lower.
Mr. Liming, will you please call the role on adoption of the service agreement with Green County ESC?
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
All right, E, memorandum of understanding, Sugar Creek Council, recommend approval of memorandum of understanding, Sugar Creek Council regarding school resource officer services for the period of July 1st, 23 through June 30th, 26.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter, Mrs. Dorn?
Again, a few months ago, we had a similar, um, agreement with the city of Bellbrook for, for services, um, for a, uh, for a school resource officers for those two buildings, the BCI and Stephen Bell, and this is a similar one, to share an officer between the middle school and the high school. Um, again, appreciate the splitting of costs with the, with the township, just like we did to the city, so appreciate their, their partnership.
Remind me, was the, um, the MOU with the city also three years?
Yep, also three years.
And does the governor's plan offset this at all?
Vastly not at all.
I got that question, yeah.
Yes, at all.
I mean, our district beginning what, like a thousand dollars?
Eighteen thousand.
Can you talk a little bit about that? That's a great point.
Sure.
Somebody brought it up and I was just asking.
Sure, so in the governor's proposal, it's, the amount of funding is based on, um, of the sliding scale, just like with everything else, so proportionally. So if we have four schools with officers, we get $18,000 to go towards.
Total, not per building?
No, not per building, no. They're basing it off $94,500 and then you get your state share percentage off of that.
Yes.
Um, so that is for public schools. Now, private schools, if you're private, you get 100% funding for your SRO. So your private school, you get 100% funding. For us, we get, what, 4,500? About $4,500 per school.
So when the governor said everybody's getting an SRO, it was like, like, caveated with.
You may have read in the news that every school building in the state You may have read in the news that every school building in the state of Ohio will be provided a school resource officer.
That is what was said, and that's...
We will be receiving $18,000, which may be a month and a half to two months of one... I don't do public math like Kevin does, but suffice it to say, you were very kind in your speech there. I'll be a little bit blunter in that it ain't doing what it was advertised to do.
Comparatively, what are some of the other districts close to us getting?
I don't have the numbers. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, they aren't getting fully funded, obviously, either, but again, it depends on, again, it depends on how many buildings they have and on what their state shares, but it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands?
Right.
We get 16, 18,000.
$18,000, yeah.
So, good.
The Fair School Funding Plan does not fairly fund schools, so we can call this the Fair School Resource Officer Funding Plan.
Because I read another, a later article, it caveated as funding towards SROs rather than a SRO for each school, so they quickly changed the tune on that.
Yeah, it's really sad, because I mean, this is trans socio-economic. I mean, are rich kids any less worthy of protection than poor kids, you know? I mean, if you wanna characterize it that way, I mean, it's just...
I mean, it all pushes back to it's down to local districts and communities to fund their schools, and that's what it is. It's up to the community.
When you can.
So, yeah.
Mr. Liming, will you please call the role on adoption of something we are very grateful for, a memorandum of understanding with Sugar Creek Township regarding school resource officers for next year, I'm sorry, for the next three years.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes, with gratitude.
All right. F, 20-24-25 School Calendar. Recommend approval of 24-25 District-Wide Calendar Draft fee.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter, Mrs. Dorn?
I had some concerns that I wanted to...
I'm sorry, where is that? Let me find it again.
It's the purple sheet.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Got it.
Very much.
Sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Anderson.
I just wanted to, how many drafts were proposed? I know, though, when we approved it last year, we got like several different, like you have, I think, three or four different possibilities.
We have three possibilities. So the district provides two possibilities, and then the union can provide one.
Okay.
The union did not provide one this year.
Okay.
So they decided not to do one.
Okay. And then, so is this just, like, did you gather input from your administrators, or I mean, like, I trust that you took their opinions into consideration, right?
We gathered input.
Gotcha, okay. Because I've just been hearing a lot of concerns about the August 9th start time for teachers and as well as the students. They feel like that, especially on the community pages, the 14th is super, pretty early, and I know families are not happy about that. So I would like more, like...
I have not heard any of that feedback from the community.
Well, it's on, it's written on the page, so it's...
I mean, they have not emailed me for that feedback.
Right, and I know that this is probably, I mean, I just feel like that August 9th, that's early, that's early for teachers.
Yeah, so the way this, so the challenge with this is you have to put some parameters in place. So the parameters that we put in place was we wanted to end the first semester before winter break. We wanted to have a week at Thanksgiving, we wanted two weeks at Christmas, and then we wanted to end before Memorial Day, and to put all those parameters in place in the way that holidays fall, this is the most similar to what the others' schedules are. So anytime, because if you see, we're getting out on Friday, December 20th, and so, in the winter. So the way all those things fall, and to get 183 teacher days in within those parameters, there's only so many ways that you can do it. And so, worked on trying to figure out those best ways, and so this, the Wednesday, I mean, of that week, that's the same week that students go back. It just happens to be a few days earlier.
And I'm sure there's reasoning behind why, why do we start in the middle of the week versus like a Monday? Is there a reason?
Well, just you're working back from the end of the first semester and transitioning back so many days and trying to keep your semesters somewhat even, your quarters are a little off, your semesters a little, a little, that's the same. And then also, sometimes it's good not to have a full week that first week, two or three days, and then, because people are worn out after those few days, and then they get a weekend.
Okay.
But I didn't particularly like the August 9th of coming back on that Friday, but...
Yeah, I just think that's not good for teachers, but...
So the only, so if you look at some ways to do that, the only other way is if we go the week of Thanksgiving for a day or two, which we have not done that, we've had a whole week off at Thanksgiving, we end on a Friday in December, so there's no other way to come back for another day that week. And so you're really locked in to this particular calendar, just the way that this flows. So now probably the year after that, the 25-26 school year, it probably will shift like a whole week later, just, I mean, probably because just the way that those things fall. The other option that was presented to teachers was to come back on Thursday, the 8th, and then get another week, get another day off around April 18th. Around April 18th. So it was just a switching of a day.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Liming, please call the role on the adoption of the 20-24-25 School Calendar.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Donations recommend acceptance of the following donations with gratitude, we recruit the FW, 2,000 cash donation towards repairs, upgrade to the stadium, high jump hit.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Carpenter, Mrs. Anderson? Comments?
Thank you very much.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, yep. Mr. Liming, please call the role.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Out-of-state travel recommend approval of the following out-of-state travel. Mr. Schultz to New Orleans for the AP International Advisory Board, cost of district at the sub times two days. Math pentathlon Indianapolis, Indiana, April 15th and 16th. Participate in National MP Tournament, Math Pentathlon Tournament, no cost of district. And eighth graders to DC, this is for next school year, not this school year. May 14th through the 17th. And then we also have a hand carry. PE teacher Sasha Taylor to the 23 Shape American Convention, no cost of the district. It's actually during spring break.
Looking for a motion to accept out-of-state travel?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson? Comments? Please call the role.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number 10, talking about potentially adding some individuals to the Active Shooter Response Team Implementation Committee. You may recall, by the resolution that was passed, there would be one or two board members who must be a member of that, as well as the superintendent and both chiefs of police or their proxy that they may designate. One of the first motion, first items discussed at the very first implementation committee meeting was just who else would provide excellent input, be a great member for that. So I would like to make a motion to recommend approval to name the following individuals. Our high school principal, Mr. Ham, our manager of business, Mrs. Sigmund, and Captain Dan Feng, who is the Green County, he's part of the Green County Sheriff's Office and head of the Green County Active Threat Committee.
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson for a second, and I made the original motion, if you don't mind, if that's okay?
Second, yeah.
Because I'll just mess it up if otherwise.
Second.
Further discussion, questions?
Was there any discussion of adding the actual SROs to that committee, or is that...
There's definitely been conversations about making sure that they're informed and bought. I don't recall any specific conversation about having them. I would have imagined, totally guessing here, that the chiefs of police would have considered that since they had the opportunity to elect a proxy, but there's not been conversation of that.
They'll be fully informed of the outcome of that committee.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And you know, that raises a good point, too, that obviously input will be solicited and is welcome from anyone, for sure, that input to this committee, I'm sure, will be substantial, which is good.
And could you clarify, could you clarify the difference between, just for anybody watching, the difference between this implementation committee and the team?
Sure. So the implementation committee was part of the resolution, saying that these are individuals who would have knowledge to really kind of figure out the nuts and bolts and the specific implementation of what would be going on. You know, part of that, I don't have it in front of me, but the resolution includes four people joining the actual team at a later date must hold a valid Ohio concealed handgun license, must pass some type of a mental health exam, which would be similar to what a law enforcement officer would go through, have a minimum of 40 hours of training, which is more hours than what your average law enforcement would have in the academy, and also matches what a bailiff, court officer, parole officer would have in order to go armed in a school. Lots of other different criteria that will be for members of the actual team. This is just a group of individuals serving on a committee, crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, making sure that it's implemented with help of subject matter experts, mentioned, making sure that it's implemented the absolute best, most effective, safest way possible.
To be fair, these are not the armed individuals.
Absolutely not.
And the individuals on board are you and Mr. Price?
Myself and Mr. Price. Other questions or comments?
Some of the greater choices.
Absolutely, I think it's excellent. Appreciate everybody's interest in serving. Mr. Liming, will you please call the role?
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to items of information and comments. Legislative update?
Yep. If we go back to my presentation up there?
Okay, yep.
So just to highlight a few things, so this is House Bill 1. This is still in its infancy stage, introduced a few weeks ago, had, I think, proposed for the sponsor, some sponsor testimony, and I know this is a bill analysis up there, but trying to kind of bolt these points out. So this is all about cutting taxes, income taxes to a flat rate of 2.75 for the state. So for the state to get that money lost from that income tax loss, see if you can follow me here, so on, get the money lost, that will be from the flat tax income rate, they're looking at real estate, local real estate income taxes, so repealing the rollback, which is 10%, and reduce the 2.5 home state exemption. So the state currently pays for these on your tax bills, and so they would then repeal those, so the taxpayers, they aren't paying for that anymore, so the taxpayer, the real estate owner, then has to pay for that. So it would increase their tax rate, again, round numbers here, 10%. So in order to make up for that, since the taxes go up for the homeowner, the state will then reduce the assessed value from 35% to 31.5%, which is about a 10% tax reduction. So then, that's kind of a wash for the homeowner. So that would mean, in round numbers, the amount of money from local tax levies would decrease by 10%, meaning a 10% reduction in our revenues from local taxes. However, most people believe that House Bill 920 would kick in, and so that says you can't collect any more or less than what was voted in, so would only impact the inside millage and not the voted millage, so would then not provide the homeowners with the tax percent, 10% tax cut that they initially wanted to do by getting rid of the home state exemption and the rollback. So the flat tax rate would actually raise the taxes of property owners, and that is not the intention from whatever, that's not the intention of the people that sponsored this bill. They don't, their intention was not to raise the property taxes of owners. So, but the gist of it, however, the way it went out was, schools could have lost, if this went through the way they attended, not the way with House Bill 920 kicking in, we would essentially have had a 10% reduction in our voted millage revenue coming in. So that's $2.5, $3 million a year if it would have played out the way that they initially played out. But again, these, as you went through here, trying to follow me, it's fairly complicated, and our own legislators didn't, in my opinion, didn't fully understand all those things because they wouldn't have proposed that if it wasn't going to give them the tax cut that they needed. So that's the gist of House Bill 1. Hopefully that made sense. I had to write it down to...
As much as they...
Okay, can I try to summarize?
Sure.
Let me know if I'm wrong?
Yep.
Very bad for our budget, and potentially very bad for the taxpayers as well.
Very bad for our budget?
Depending which kicks in with 920.
Right, right. It could, that's not the way it's gonna, I don't believe that's the way it's gonna end up. They're gonna try to figure out some other way, but it's kind of disturbing that they intended to take away 10% of revenue from schools, MRDD, libraries, cities, townships. They were gonna pay parks, they were gonna pay for the state income tax on the backs of local voted millage that we have voted in, in our community, they were gonna take that money away.
I'm just not confident that they've lost their motivation to do that.
I don't know.
I think they just stumbled upon unintended consequence of their plan, and so I'm sure they're sleuthing way to make it happen, you know, whether they modify House Bill 920 or whatever. Yeah, again, I've said it on more than one occasion, I truly view the state of Ohio as adversarial to public education. Period, dot. So...
I agree.
Hope Governor Devine is listening, because that's my very strong opinion.
I think it's hard to say how it would affect any particular, I think any individual, depending on what your, the mix of your income is versus if you're a property owner, make a lot but live in a little house versus, you know, like, how you spend your money and whatnot, whether your taxes are, you get an income tax break, get to pay more property taxes or vice versa, versus it's gonna impact every family differently, probably it's gonna impact every school differently. And the fact that it could happen after budgets are argued, that's the, that's the real crux of it for me, is if you're gonna make big changes, they need to be planned out far enough in advance that we can budget to them, right? Like, don't do it and tell us we have to operate by this next year, like, off of drastically different financial outlooks like that.
Hold on, it has a negative impact for people who are retiring, because if your income is dropping... income is dropping, that you're going to raise your property taxes, so they're, that's not a population they want to...
Yeah, if you own a home.
Yeah, if you own a home.
There is much.
So, yeah, so that's obviously one to keep a very close eye on. Another one to keep a very close eye on, if we can move forward here, House Bill 11, this is about school vouchers. So this would allow eligible students, they, eligible students are those that are, their family, or their family's 400% of the poverty level or less, so for a family of four, that's $111,000, and those students never have to be, have been enrolled in public schools. So this would provide $5,500 to K-8 students, $7,500 to 9-12 school, 9-12 students, this cannot be used to go to another public school. Yet, private schools do not have the same accountability standards as public schools, yet they'll receive public money. So again, this one is potentially very bad for us also in the long run. Again, this is, this is an attempt to destroy, severely damage public schools, as in, I think, House Bill 1 would also.
How people, all kinds of people feel denied about vouchers, I think what's important, people understand is where the money comes from. Like, is it the education fairy from the state that is going to give the 16-year-old that has always lived in Bel Brook, that has always gone to Catholic school and wants to go to altar, is the education, the state education fairy going to grant that family their, what did it say, $7,500? Or is Bel Brook Local District granting that family? Are we the fairy?
Right, it's my understanding that we would lose our state share, which is about $3,300. We would not lose $7,500, we would lose $3,300. That student is not going to be here anymore, they're going to somewhere else, so...
Essentially be paying a portion of it.
Per student.
That's for students already here when we're losing three.
Correct.
Your example was someone's already going to all of them.
So someone who's never gone to school here?
Right. Then we wouldn't be paying anything.
Right.
That's the way I understand it. Right.
Yeah, it would not put a pass on it. Figure out some way to provide the local funding for a student that is a resident of a specific district. I don't think that's currently the proposal, but I don't put it past them, you know, to come up with that idea.
And to be clear, there already is a voucher program of sorts in the state of Ohio, if you live in a, I don't know if failing is the right word, but poorly performing district. It's not something we deal with here, but, so this isn't to fix that, it was just for anyone that lives in a fabulous school district.
If you're 400% poverty level or less, yeah, anywhere in the state. Correct. And then moving on to the last one, Senate Bill 1, this would, this is kind of the, takes powers away from the State Board of Education and give them to a governor-appointed czar of education, called DEW, Department of Education and Workforce.
You say the DEW?
The DEW, D-E-W.
The DEW.
DEW, Department of Education and Workforce, give me like our acronym, so the DEW. And again, so whoever's in power, the governor's office would be able to appoint this person and take away all the state board powers away from them, and only give them the, really the constitutional low-level powers. Again, I think the issues and concerns are legislators that continue to make rules and laws with unreasonable timelines or unfunded mandates, and make it challenging for the schools to do things, rather than necessarily having the czar as the, being answer to everything. But, I don't know. BASSA is not taking a position on that at this particular bill, they have people in BASSA that are for it and then are against it, so they are not taking a position on it. There's positives and negatives to it.
It seems it would be highly dependent upon who it is that is appointed by a governor.
Right.
I mean, this would be flip-flop every time that there's a change in power, you're going to have, you know, a very different perspective, meaning what?
Right.
Or potentially.
I mean, one Board of Education member at the state level only has so much influence, right?
Right.
And so, but if they're going to embody essentially all the powers that would lie in the State Board of Education in one individual, that varies on the governor, and the thing, I guess, that's mystifying to me is the, just to put it bluntly, is the Republican leadership in the state so confident that in the future it's always going to remain Republican, because if they're a Democrat, they probably aren't going to like what the new DEW does, you know? So I think it's, or vice versa, if we're Democrats in right now.
Sure.
So it's just, it's just mind-numbing to me to think what, how pathetic this proposal is, in my opinion. It's just a...
I'm sure the State Board of Education right now, to my knowledge, does not truly have many powers, if any at all. I mean, they advise and they recommend and they, but really, they don't. So I'm not, total, I guess I say, I'm unclear as to what powers this czar would be taking from the State Board, because I don't feel like the State Board has many.
That's a good point, but the State Board probably should have more, they should be a, well, I guess, what, nine of them are appointed, eight of them are elected, something like that, I don't know.
Well, they pass, you know, what the standards are.
So curriculum.
So curriculum standards, they pass all of that, any kind of rules and regulations, they have public review, and then they pass those rules and laws. So, you know, the czar could come in and say, this is what the new standards are, and they use the new standards, you don't have to go through any necessarily vetting process or input from anybody, it could be whatever it is.
Fill in the blank on whatever the issue is, I just believe that taking power away from the people and putting it in the hands of the czar, contradictory to the Republican leadership, I just need to have legislative body that is elected and close to the people. So thank you for that report.
So what's the point of the report, to inform the community, to have the board consider taking action, as in a letter, or what's the purpose of presenting this to us tonight?
Yeah, I mean, if we would, if you would want me on your behalf to send some information to our state reps and senators of where kind of our thoughts are, I think I have a pretty idea of where everybody's thoughts are on these three issues, and just provide some input, or individually, you guys could call our state reps and senators and so forth, or I'd be more than happy to do something on behalf of the board. Also, there is a, an organization for the vouchers that is taking a lawsuit up against the state for the vouchers that they think are unconstitutional. The group is Equity and Equity Adequacy, and they have been fighting against state vouchers since Derolf and so forth. So that, if we want to be a part of that particular movement, we probably would need to pass a resolution, because it costs $2 or so per student. So I could always bring that back at the next board meeting if that's something we want to do, or, and/or I can write a letter slash email to our state reps. I will be talking with them next month at our superintendent meeting, the state legislators are supposed to be at a meeting, I'm not sure if they'll all show up to that, but that's the plan. So what, would anybody, good question, Kevin, does anybody want me to do anything with that?
I think for each of these, we probably, we, well, no, I was going to say that each of us individually may feel differently. I think, I think this is really helpful for us to get this update, because if nothing else, we need to be aware of these things that are potentials when we're making decisions about spending, for example. That said, I think we all need to get smarter on each of them.
Well, two of the three are philosophical and probably a whole lot less impactful, you know, to, at least immediately to the district. But if the other, but if the initial one you talked about, House Bill 1, would get, you know, finalized and acted on, that could have a catastrophic effect on this district in the near term. I would venture to say probably all of us are not much in favor of that. So, I don't know, something to think about.
I don't understand it, to know if I'm in favor of it or not, but what I know, I think what we probably all are, none of us are in favor of this, making changes at the last minute with zero notice and requiring us, like, something that could potentially impact us that significantly, why, so near-term, when budgets are already set?
Right.
And like, quit, basically quit yanking us around and let us plan and then execute the plan, if you are going to change something at a strategic level, you need to give us time and make it clear, like...
Right.
I mean, House Bill 1 really means we're going to lose $3 million, it's pretty easy for me to put up a resolution, a proposed resolution, and sign a letter saying, don't do that.
Right.
The other two, they're murky and, you know, and there's debate about them and whatnot, but that one's pretty darn good cut, if it really is going to do what, I think it's, as you said, because it's complicated as heck, but I think smart people looked at it, and I think the end result was, yeah, you're going to lose money at the local school district level.
I think House Bill 11, though, has the potential to continue to evolve, to have the money follow every student, and there's no redness, necessarily residency requirements of anybody, it's a free agent market. That's what, in my opinion, that's the authors of this bill and this thought process, that's what they want, and this is just slowly pulling the frog, you know, as time goes along here. They do it little by little, and this is the next big step here. So I think that one has the potential to rock public education also.
My two cents, and feel free to pick them up or just leave them lay, but I think, at least how it was listed on the agenda, this is just an item of information discussion, as Mrs. Dorn says, just for awareness, for, I would be hesitant to take any formal action tonight.
Agreed.
Right.
Anything else on that, anybody? And if not, I would like to make a motion that at this time, the board will meet in executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and/or discipline of a public employee per RC 121.22G1. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
I heard Mrs. Dorn first. Mr. Liming, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session at 9:02. Hey, we are in executive session at 9:02.
We are out of executive session at 10:24 PM. I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. I will... Can I call the roll? Do you want to call the roll?
Yes, you can call the roll.
Okay, good. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey is a yes. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.